Good evening and welcome to the rescheduled November the 13th, 2014 work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For television audience, I'd like to present you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Fraley, Chairable Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Joe Carpenter, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Tom Keger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our first item is Veterans Recognition 2014 Veterans Day Proclamation. Commissioner Brown. Will be coming to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony here?
Yes, sir.
There you are. If you'll step up here with me, please, sir. First of all, I want to thank you for your service and all the other veterans around here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Whereas each November the 11th, the people of the United States have the distinct privilege of honoring the veterans of United States Armed Forces who have bravely preserved their freedom which allows assault to continue in the land of the free and the home of the brave. Whereas veterans fought valiantly, many lives have been lost, many live on today, and many more still make the same sacrifices men and women in uniform have made for the past 251 years. Millions of American veterans have defended our great country in World Wars, World War I, II, Korea, Vietnam, and in the Middle East. We pay tribute to those patriots who have risked their lives, to the families they support, and to the heroes no longer with us. And whereas on Veterans Day 2014, November the 11th, we salute and honor our veterans and commemorate the legacy of service and sacrifice they have upheld in the steadfast defense of American ideals and enduring principles. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners offers up its bona fide gratitude and appreciation to the veterans of Gaston Counties and all those throughout the country as it is proclaimed, Veterans Day, November the 11th, 2014. In Gaston County, it encourages all citizens to seek veterans throughout the community and recognize them in their acts of brave and unselfish contributions keeping America free from this generation and the generations to come. Let us remember our solemn obligation to the veterans and recommit to upholding the funding principles of our great country so that we may always be free to be adopted on the 13th day of November 2014.
Tony, thank you. Please say something on behalf of the veterans.
Commissioner Brown, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Commission, County staff, I want to thank you for inviting me here tonight. It's a pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the citizens, veterans of Gaston County, and there are numerous of them, many of them. With your permission, I'll proudly display this, exhibit it in our American Military Museum for all to see. And at our parade, at our concluding ceremony, we recognized all the deceased Vietnam veterans in Gaston County. There were 79, and we read each name and rang the bell for each name. And spectators would raise their hand if they were familiar with the deceased. And it was a very moving ceremony. I had cold chills all the time they were doing that. Two of my schoolmates' names were called, and I was just fortunate that I didn't go to Vietnam. I went to Germany, so I didn't see the horrors of war that many of our veterans did. I'm sure we have many veterans here in the audience. Could I ask every veteran that's here to stand up, please? No Charlie Finjers here? But, and there are over 500 in all the wars of Gaston County that have been lost in action. So, on behalf of all of those Vietnam deceased veterans, I want to thank you. And this will be exhibited in the American Military Museum. Thank you so much. Give you the nice one.
Thank you again, Tony.
Appreciate it.
Our next item is Judge William Gaston Award Presentation. A very important part of the Board's mission is to encourage citizen participation in county government and community involvement. In 1998, the County Commission established an annual award bearing the name of the county's namesake, Judge William Gaston, to recognize those volunteers who have demonstrated exemplary commitment, dedication, and leadership. And since this establishment, the County Commission has honored 50 recipient volunteers for their service to the Gaston County community. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Ansel Overby to come to the podium along with any family and friends he has with him to receive the William Gaston Award.
Okay. That's a slow one. You stand over here and say, "Give it to me." Okay. Where'd he go? Okay, Dr. Ansel. I've known him for a long time, and I was debating whether to even read this because I know you so well, I don't even know if this does justice. The proclamation here, or commendation, will tell you a little bit about his history. I want to tell you that since I met Dr. Ansel Overby, I have, I've never met anyone so passionate, concerned about life. He is the President/CEO of Crisis Pregnancy Center, and I can tell you, because of this man, because of his life and his faith, there are children in Gaston County walking around today because he was willing to stand on the front lines and support life. That means something to this community, and this Board would like to recognize you for your work.
Thank you.
Dr. Ansel Overby III was born in Bluefield, West Virginia, and graduated from Lee University with a BA, from Vanderbilt with a Masters of Divinity, and Drew University with a Doctorate. He is an ordained UMC minister and was a pastor for 19 years. He is a writer, a teacher, and a tireless servant of God whose ministry is evident in his extensive body of work that continues to grow and shape not only his walk with Christ, but the path of all those he touches. For more than 17 years, Ansel has been the CEO of Crisis Pregnancy Center of Gaston County with satellites in Belmont, Highland, Bessemer City, Dallas, and Lincoln Town. In 2008, Ansel's vision for the place of refuge became a reality. The Place of Refuge of Gaston County Incorporated located in Gastonia is the fulfillment of a vision of holistic care for clients in the Piedmont area of North Carolina. It is based on the Old Testament scriptures of Joshua 21 through 9, and cities of refuge where those who had unintentionally harmed someone might flee to a place of divine mercy and care. With extensive work with those who have had abortions, Dr. Overby realized there was an overwhelming need to offer a full range of alternatives to abortion, thus the multifaceted ministries contained in the Place of Refuge. This debt-free-to-the-gloria-of-God facility presently houses Crisis Pregnancy Center, a medical clinic with ultrasound, an adolescent parenting program, an abstinence educator, and soon a professional counseling center and a STD/HIV testing clinic. Eventually, the additional land will be used to build shepherding homes and/or a maternity As CEO, Dr. Overby supervises a staff of 12, serves under 11-member Board Directors, speaks extensively in the community and churches on pro-life issues, encourages men to embrace their role in pregnancy issues, writes monthly partner letters, and a biannual heartbeat newsletter. He hosts numerous visits from centers across the seven-state region. He is a speaker at other CPCs. He praises God continually and ties to support other nonprofits who share the gospel. Administively, he has written over 2 million in grants and has been successful in the award of more than $750,000. Ansel presently serves on the Health Advisory Committee for the public schools, speaks at civic and community functions, and serves on Gaston County's Adolescent Sexual Health Committee. He also served as a Board Member with Carolina Pregnancy Fellowship. Ansel and his wife Sheri have been married for 36 years and have three children, all married and all graduates of Liberty University, and one grandson, Theo, who was born this past summer. Ansel, you have been a visionary with a team approach that involves everyone working together for a common goal and letting your faith inform you of all your decisions. Accepting this award is a credit to those who have acknowledged that the vision of impacting the community of Gaston and beyond is worth the investment. Ansel, the County Commission in Gaston County and a lot of little children are indebted to you for the many years of service and for your continuing efforts to make Gaston County a better place to live. And at this time, on behalf of the Gaston County Commission, it is my pleasure to present to you the William Gaston Award.
Before you speak, Ansel, I just want to make sure if there's anyone on the Commission that would like to say a few words before he speaks, you can do so now.
Tracy, I'll just say, I appreciate Dr. Overby and Sheri, who's really the brains behind this whole thing, his wife. But I think you get to know him ahead. We talked about Ansel's passion. I've never been around anybody that has the passion for life that he does, and I genuinely mean that. In full disclosure, my wife serves on the Board at the Crisis Pregnancy Center and just loves it, respects Dr. Overby. And he's got a lot of people here supporting him tonight, a lot of his Board members and staff, and that's just a testament to the respect that these people have for you, Dr. Overby. I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Keger.
I'll just take a moment to the William Gaston Award. Did we highlight what that was at the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. It's for service, and I just want to thank you first and foremost to your service to 207,000 people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Philbeck, and to all the Commissioners and to everyone who's here this evening for the opportunity. This is the most difficult thing that I'm doing because it's as if I was attending my own funeral hearing about some of the accomplishments that God has allowed me to be a part of. Those things do not happen unless there's a whole lot of people who are willing to listen and follow a vision. And I'm the blessed one in the sense that the leadership has allowed me to do that as our Board of Directors, and I have a great staff to work with. And the constituents of Crisis Pregnancy Center are unlike any other group that you'll find in any place in Gaston County is blessed to have centers now in every corner, north, south, east and west, and also to extend into Lincoln County. And yesterday, I was in Charlotte on Hebron Street, and that is one of our abortion clinics in Mecklenburg County. And as I was standing there, there were six words that came to me as I was thinking about receiving this award this evening, and those six words were, "I wish I could do more." Thank you this evening.
Well, Chairman Philbeck makes his way back to the podium. Could I have Mr. Falk, Mr. Wilson, we have some esteemed members from the Cramertown Town Board, I'd like to have the mayor, Mr. Woolley come up, town manager, Mr. Peoples, Mr. Coffin, please come up, please.
Look, at least got a shave on this one guy here.
This is a commendation that we're putting together for the North Carolina Response Rating System Reduction. Says, "Whereas the fire protection services are provided to the citizens of Gaston County by a total of 26 different municipal volunteer and/or combination fire departments. And whereas these departments continuously strive to improve their services they provide to the citizens of their district. And whereas, one such improvement is to participate in the rate reduction survey conducted by the North Carolina Department of Insurance Office of the State Fire Marshal as a part of the North Carolina Response Rating System as NCRRS. And whereas, back in March, officials spent several days touring and inspecting the Cramertown Fire Department evaluating their equipment, maintenance, facilities, personnel, training, availability of water sources, 911 call centers, fire inspections, fire investigations, and public fire safety education capabilities, et cetera. And whereas, the Cramertown Fire Department successfully lowered their rating from a Class V to a Class III and joins Gastonia Fire Department as the only other Class III in the county, and now among the fewer than 30 departments across the state of North Carolina with the same rating. And whereas, effective October 1st, 2014, commercial and industrial properties both within Cramertown and McAttonville fire districts should qualify for an insurance rate reduction. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize and commend the members of the Cramertown Fire Department and their hard work and sacrifice, tremendous dedication, reducing the cost of fire protection to the citizens they serve. This to be adopted on the 13th day of November 2014."
So we have a few people here we can talk, and y'all can tell a little bit about what the rating is and everything, but thank you so much for your service and what you mean to the community. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Chairman and Board of Commissioners, Chief Wilson and I are honored to serve in the capacity that we do, and we appreciate the recognition, but it's something that we truly enjoy doing, and you know, our desire is to make an impact to the community that we serve.
Members of the Commission, Chairman Philbeck and Commissioner Brown, we certainly appreciate the recognition tonight on behalf of the citizens of Cramertown and our Board of Commissioners. We're very proud of the dedicated professionals that we have at the Cramertown Fire Department. They do a good job day in, day out for us, and this recognition tonight, we hope possibly lowers the rates for some of our homeowners and businesses in Cramertown and McAttonville, and I'm sure they'll continue to do a good job. I thank Chief Falk and Chief Wilson for being here, and Fire Marshal Eric Kendricks for being here tonight. We have Michael Peoples, our town manager, and Mayor Protem, Will Coffin here tonight with us. So again, we appreciate the recognition.
I really like the bow tie.
I knew you'd have it on, sir.
Our next item is a proclamation adoption awareness month. Commissioner Price.
Thank you. Anyone here, DHHS, Mr. Dobbins, Sarah Norris? Looks like you're going, looks like you're going to get all three.
Sorry. Thank you.
This first one is a proclamation for Adoption Awareness Month. Whereas every child deserves a safe, loving, nurturing, and permanent home, and children awaiting a permanent home are not the newborns most people picture when they think of adoption. Generally, they are older children and teenagers who have unique medical, physiological, and physical needs. Adoption gives them a brighter future, and whereas, in November 2014, six children from foster care in Gaston County are awaiting loving, permanent families. And whereas nearly all these children have special needs because of physical, mental, or emotional disabilities, because they need to be placed as a sibling group because they are minorities, or because they are school aids. These children need extra patience and support to help them overcome previous hardships. And whereas these are families able and willing to adopt children who have special needs, and finding these families for waiting children is our goal in Gaston County. Children waiting for adoptive parents and families who have adopted these children require and deserve community and public agency support. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims November as Adoption Awareness Month. In honor of this event, we encourage citizens, community agencies, the faith community, organizations, businesses, and others to celebrate adoption, honor families that grow through adoption, further an awareness of the changes and issues in adoption, and focus attention on these children who live in the shadow of an uncertain future while they await permanent families. We all must work together to help secure permanent, loving homes for each and every child in Gaston County regardless of race, age, gender, health, emotional, or behavioral challenge, or past distress. This to be adopted the 13th day of November 2014. Mr. Dobbins is our Director of Department of Health and Human Services. You want to say anything about?
Why don't I wait till you read both? Cover both bookends.
All right. Our next one is a proclamation for Family Caregiver Month. Whereas Gaston County is joining the state of North Carolina and the nation in declaring November 2014 as Family Caregiver Month to honor and support the tremendous contribution family caregivers make each day to enable their elderly and disabled loved ones to remain in their homes and communities. And whereas caregivers often find themselves looking after their children and parents at the same time, and the percentages of families caring for older adults who need additional assistance is expected to increase substantially over the next several years. And whereas the labor of love can result in hardships for caregivers, including physical, psychological, and financial challenges, family caregivers should be able to enter into their caregiving role with the knowledge and assurance that they can call upon the business, faith, and medical and human service communities to assist with information, counseling, respite, and formal service when needed. Whereas our businesses and companies can also contribute to families' ability to care for their loved ones in need by offering flexible work arrangements and paid leave when caregiver duties require employees to miss work. Employers can enable workers and caregiver responsibilities to balance work and family obligations more easily with such efforts. Whereas the Gaston County Department of Health and Human Services, Social Services Division, Adult and Aging Services Division, and many other area organizations are committed to increasing the awareness of caregiver needs and continue to press forward in addressing these concerns. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims November 2014 as Family Caregiver Month in Gaston County and urges all citizens of this county to acknowledge and support family, friends, and neighbors who are helping those who are in need. This to be adopted the 13th day of November 2014.
I think these two proclamations speak to the bookends of need, our children and our aging adults. We have an incredibly supportive Board. We have an incredibly supportive agency, and I think if you asked the community, we would have an incredibly supportive community. My request to you is, ask your neighbor, ask your friends if they could help us in either one of these areas. We need foster families, and we need caregivers, and it takes a village. So thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for the incredible support. The agency certainly recognizes that, but our community needs more help. So thank you very much.
Now, we have a retirement commendation from the Department of Health and Human Services. Whereas Sheila Long began employment, excuse me, with Gaston County Department of Social Service as an eligibility technician within the food stamp program on September 30, 1992. And whereas Ms. Long continued to work in the food stamps, Medicaid, WFFA, and employment services as job placement specialists until her retirement effective November 1st, 2014. And whereas Ms. Long's supervisor, Alice Wilson, notes, "Ms. Long has been a great advocate for her clients. She has always shown kindness and compassion toward her clients and coworkers. Throughout her career with Gaston County, Ms. Long has guided countless families to self-sufficiency and economic stability. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses her deepest appreciation to Sheila Long for her significant service contributions to Gaston County and DHHS Services, Social Service Division, its clients, and citizens of Gaston County. This Commission expresses gratitude for her 22 years of dedicated service to the citizen of Gaston County and extends its best wishes to her for a healthy and rewarding retirement. This to be adopted the 13th day of November 2014." Mr. Dobbins.
On behalf of Sheila and the entire agency, 22 years of service, an incredible accomplishment. I accept this on Sheila's behalf. I'm sure if she was here this evening, she would say it was an incredible experience and driven by dedication to the community. So thank you very much.
Our next item is a commendation for the Gaston County Solid Waste and Recycling Division, their recipients of the Solid Waste Association of North America Excellence Landfill Gas Utilization and Integrated Solid Waste Management Systems Award. Commissioner Williams.
It's a mouthful, Aunt. Ms. Marcy Smith, is she here?
Hey, how are you?
Whereas the mission of the Gaston County Solid Waste and Recycling Division is to protect the resident to natural resources of Gaston County by providing environmentally friendly, cost-effective, and technologically sound waste management strategies. And whereas each year, the Solid Waste Association of North America recognizes outstanding solid waste programs and facilities with environmentally and economically sound solid waste management practices. And whereas the Gaston County Board of Commissioners endeavor to promote our county and its advancement of landfill gas-to-energy innovation and integrated solid waste management programs. And whereas on August 26, 2014, Gaston County Solid Waste and Recycling Division was awarded two Solid Waste Association of North Carolina Excellence Awards for landfill gas utilization and integrated solid waste management systems. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Gaston County Solid Waste and Recycling Division for being awarded two Association of North America Excellence Awards and commands their staff for the dedication and effort in working together to develop a nationally acclaimed program for which the county and its citizens can be proud.
I would just like to take the opportunity to recognize our staff out at the landfill and the recycling centers, the renewable energy center. Sometimes trash is a little lackluster, and we don't get recognized that often, and so I would like our staff to know how much I appreciate what they do. And really, none of the projects we've been able to push through and win awards on, we couldn't do without your support. So, Board, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment. The Director of Public Services back there, I don't know if you know it, it's not sexy, don't really make the papers a lot, but we have a huge... don't really make the papers a lot, but we have a huge energy plant out at the landfill. It's the methane that we get out of the landfill is able to run that, we're able to sell the carbon credits. Not only that, we've been able to extend the life of our landfill. Again, they don't get all the news, but your taxpayer, your tax dollars go to that, and I can tell you, we've saved a ton of money because of their leadership. Thank you. Our next item is certificates of appreciation for public service. It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commission to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards or commissions. This type of service is a foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Mike Cox, Animal Control Task Force Advisory Board; Monte Monteleone, Economic Development Commission; Rebecca Harris, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council; and Amy Ballard and Monte Monteleone with the Travel and Tourism Advisory Board. At this time, we have citizen recognition. We are limited to one hour. You sign up prior to the start of session. We do have folks that are signed up. What I'll do is I will call your name. If you would, when you come forward, please state your name, your address for the record. First is Ms. Karen Turner.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Karen Turner. I live at 158 Davis Road, Bessemer City. I would like to thank you all for allowing me this time to explain why I was disappointed to hear of the resolution on tonight's agenda condemning the court's decisions allowing a marriage equality in North Carolina. You've spoken how this resolution is your way of standing up for 76% who voted for Amendment One. However, only 25% of Gaston County voters in a May primary actually voted for it. Public opinion has changed greatly since 2012. As recently as September 2014, Elon University polled North Carolina voters three times, and each time, a majority of those voters supported marriage equality. The citizens of Gaston County depend on our Commissioners to spend every available moment working on solutions to the many issues that we face. We also expect you to represent equally all of us regardless of race, gender, faith, social status, or sexual orientation. Instead of wasting time and resources on another grandstanding resolution against marriage equality, I feel there are more pressing issues in Gaston County that should demand your attention. We have over 27% of our children living in poverty. Over 36,000 Gaston County residents suffer from food insecurity. The North Carolina U-6 rate, which counts those unemployed and underemployed, remains high at 12.6%. Our county labor force continues to decline, having lost almost 3,000 workers in the past 12 months. We need you to focus on building a positive relationship with our school board. Our per-student spending is hovering in the bottom seven statewide. We need you to focus on the upcoming budget dilemma where you'll have to face tough decisions due to a state revenue shortfall and a lack of ample revenue here. I would suggest that more than 76% of us in Gaston County feel these issues are far more important than political pandering via another anti-gay marriage resolution. Thank you again for your time and your consideration. I hope you'll find a way to agree that the time for divisive social antics needs to end. Amendment One wounded many in this community. And at this time, we need strong leadership. Pouring salt in the wound in our community does not reach that high bar.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And for the sake of time, unless you're not physically able, after Christie is Ginger Feimster, then Jim Kellogg, and then I think Ben Brackett. If you could, if maybe you could go to that side just for the sake of time to move it along. Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Thank you. My name's Chrissy Williamson. My address is 421 Holly Drive, Belmont. I too would like to speak to the resolution in response to the repealing of Amendment One. First, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I believe that the work that you do for our county is incredibly important. I'm grateful for your commitment to honoring every constituent who lives within Gaston County regardless of political party, religious affiliation, or socioeconomic status. I know this is no easy task, given the great diversity within our county lines. My spouse and I moved to Gaston County in 2012 because of its affordability and easy access to Charlotte and Shelby where we work. We purchased a home here, and now we're raising our daughter here. We also tell our friends about how much we enjoy life here, and we advocate for them to move here because we believe that's a great way to build community. My spouse and I also both have Master of Divinity degrees, and I have an additional graduate degree in theology and ethics. He serves as a chaplain, and I serve as an ordained clergy in a Baptist church. I say these things not to brag, but to ensure you that we are both committed to the Bible, to theological conversation, and to the free practice of religion regardless of what that religion is. We work every day to ensure that our daughter, and even her children, will grow up with the same religious rights that we have enjoyed. For this reason, I want to express my concern for your use of the term sanctity of marriage in your resolution. For something to be sacred or holy is a religious distinction, which has nothing to do with the law, nor is it the business of any elected political representative to use as a label for his or her opinion. It is not a synonym for tradition. It's a term that's used in religious communities to distinguish the things that humanity cannot violate. Different religious communities declare different things to be sacred. In my tradition, baptism and communion, among other sacraments, are sacred or sanctified. They are holy, and they are determined so by our practicing community of faith that's made up of people who are in relationship with one another. We have a sacred trust that is shared and that involves deep respect for difference of opinion. One of the things that we, even within my church, are not in 100% agreement upon is a definition of marriage. But we do agree that all marriage is sacred. Even in our one church, we don't have a consensus about what that means. Some believe marriage is between one man and one woman, meaning no divorce and no remarriage. Others believe that marriage is between one man and one woman until it doesn't work out, in which case divorce is acceptable, and then remarriage is permissible. Still, others believe that marriage is any sacred union between two people regardless of sex or gender, who make a holy promise to share their lives together. Can you see that great diversity of opinion that exists within just one community of faith? It seems to reason that if within one church there can be such diversity, that amongst your 206,000 or 207,000 constituents, greater diversity must exist. For you to represent them all fairly and within the parameters of the Constitution, it means that you must separate your own religious opinions from your governing practice, and that you are committed to defending the rights of all people to practice their religions, diverse as they may be. I see that you've stated in your resolution that you will uphold the law even though you don't agree with it, and I thank you for that. I wish that you would amend the language of your resolution to better reflect your role as political representatives of our entire community without dabbling in the realm of religion and religious language. That which is sacred belongs to communities of faith, not to political institutions. Now, I embrace that you and I probably have different opinions on marriage. I celebrate our differences in the community that is Gaston County. But I do not celebrate the casual use of the term sanctity of marriage, especially as religious institutions themselves are still struggling for consensus on this topic. They're even struggling for majority. When all is said and done, God alone will make all things holy. And if the story of Jesus have any truth in them at all, then the God of Jesus, the God who makes things holy to begin with, has a very big understanding of what is holy and what is sacred. And since we can't prove that tonight, I would like for us to reserve this term of sanctity for religious communities to work out within the context of relationship. It's not a suitable category for political conversation or for political resolution. Furthermore, at the end of your resolution, you ask those in agreement with you to raise their voices so that they might be heard. And I want to invite you to expand that to all of your constituents, whether or not they agree with you, and you might be surprised by the people who you represent. Thanks for your time and consideration. I look forward to building a brighter Gaston County alongside each of you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Ms. Ginger Feimster.
My name is Ginger Feimster, and my address is 316 Greenwood Avenue in Belmont. And I am glad to be here tonight, but it seems that every time I come here, we're at odds. And I'm sorry that is the case as often as it is. But when I woke up yesterday, or actually Wednesday, I believe, and saw the, which was yesterday, I guess, I don't know what yesterday was, I'm sorry, but when I saw the headlines in the Gazette about the resolution, I was very disappointed. And to be frank, I was disappointed in my county Commissioners. Because what I want my county Commissioners to think about is you are elected by the people for the people, and that means all people. That means every citizen of Gaston County. I'm a retired teacher. In fact, I've retired after 30 years, more than 30 years of teaching. And in the classroom, even though I had very strong political feelings, social feelings, religious feelings, I did not take those to the classroom. I taught the students I taught for over 30 years the things that they needed to know to be functional adults, to get along in society, to be able to read, to be able to write. One thing I did not do, though, was pass my beliefs, my personal beliefs, on to them. I am a lifelong Methodist. I am as Christian as anyone sitting in front of me. You are no more Christian and no more religious than I. You are no more Christian and no more religious than a lot of people. But not everybody has a podium on which to tell of their religious beliefs or their political beliefs. But one thing I want my Commissioners to realize is that, and I think that you are in a nonpartisan position, if I am correct. I feel that you are there not as Republicans, or Democrats, or Independents. You are there as people who want to serve the county, but that means everybody in the county. It doesn't mean Republicans, or Democrats, or Independents. It doesn't mean Baptist or fundamentalist. It doesn't mean Methodist, the way I believe. I have Methodist all the way back on my father's side, Baptist all the way back on my mother's side, but I don't take it into the organizations that I work for and with. Religion needs to be kept in the church, in your home, in your personal life. I'm all for everybody having religion, but there is no place for it in politics unless you want it in your Republican body, or my Democratic body, or wherever we choose, if it's our choice, and if that's what our job dictates. But your job does not. Your job is nonpartisan. Your job is not religious. You are not at a church council meeting. You are in a government building, and Harley Gaston, who this room was named for, was a member of my church. He was an attorney. He was a judge. I never knew Harley to put church and state together. And why you do, I cannot understand. Practice your religion, practice your politics. I admire you for that. I admire everybody for doing that. I don't like apathy. I don't admire apathy. I admire people who have convictions. But you must remember that the people you serve are of all walks of life, they are love who they love, they should be able to marry who they marry. And as county Commissioners, frankly, it is not your business. You have wonderful business to take care of, business in Gaston County that needs to be taken care of. But represent everybody. Don't pick your favorites. Please be there for all of us. And I thank you for your consideration of that.
Thank you, Ms. Feimster. Jim Kellogg?
Good evening. My name is Jim Kellogg. I reside at 1652 Low Bethesda Road here in Gastonia. As of 5:30 last evening, Commissioner Williams, your resolution actually became irrelevant. The United States Supreme Court finally acted on equality in marriage. They lifted a stay that had been imposed by the Federal Circuit Court in the state of Kansas. As of today, the United States Supreme Court validated same-gender marriage in the state of Kansas. There is no more room for appeal, sir. Apple, Starbucks, Google, Facebook, eBay, Nike, The Gap, Ben &amp; Jerry's, Banana Republic, Levi Strauss &amp; Company, Microsoft, JetBlue, AT&amp;T, MasterCard, Instagram, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Ernst &amp; Young, Kellogg's Corporation, Marc Jacobs International, UBS, Citicorp, Wells Fargo, Bank of America, Orbits, Cisco, Goldman Sachs, Marriott International, Moody's, Expedia, Target are just some of the corporations in our country that openly support LGBTQ rights, equality, and same-gender marriage. When is Gaston County going to focus on economic development? Would any of these companies, corporations, or others that support equality ever want to be associated with Gaston County, a county that is known for blatantly, overtly being anti-LGBTQ? Should not the focus of this Board of Commissioners be on what is good for the county, all residents of the county? Please be careful, gentlemen. When you hate something, you may end up hating someone that you love. There is a very good chance that someone in your life, someone that you love identifies as LGBTQ. Know that our children are watching, and they are listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Mr. Ben Brackett?
My name is Ben Brackett. I reside at 1209 Oakwood Avenue in Gastonia. County Commissioners, we really appreciate you. You do, in my opinion, represent the majority of the folks in this county. I am not a Republican, and I'm not a Democrat. I'm an Independent. This thing didn't come up before this council. Amendment One was done by other politicians, and I will put this point forth the best way I know how. I didn't come up here with a prepared statement, had no intention of it. I never do. I don't take up the full, whatever it is, five minutes. I don't take up the full, whatever it is, five minutes. But I am Army Retired. I spent 29 years, 11 months, 14 days, nine hours as infantry. Gentlemen, I hope that you realize that Amendment I is nothing but a political football of the liberals that have driven this country into absolute and terrible, over the last so many years, shame by the rest of the world. These judges that approved this Amendment I over the citizens were both appointed by Bill Clinton. I'm a conservative. I'm proud of it. And everybody in here that doesn't agree with that, I feel for you. Thank you.
At this time, there are no further citizen comments. The actual vote on that resolution will actually be in the next board meeting. I'll make just a few quick comments, and then we can reserve if the board has any comments towards when that item is brought up. First, I just want to say thank you for coming out. I do think diversity is an awesome thing. I do value your opinion. I respect your opinion, and I appreciate you taking the time to come out and letting your commissioners know where you stand on these issues. This is not my resolution. This is a resolution Commissioner Williams brought forward. I will be supporting it. I just want to make a couple things clear, probably two. A lot of times, we're asked, why do you focus on these issues and not economic development and education and things of that nature? We do. This past year, we increased school funding. You're going to hear a presentation here in just a few minutes from Gaston One to hopefully improve our economic development outlay. We combined the Department of Social Services and the Health Department, which has saved over $3 million to the taxpayer, and the list goes on and on. The problem is, those are not sexy issues. That doesn't sell papers. I'll tell you what sells papers: social issues, or anything that they can drum up, what I would say strife and things of that nature. So I do want you to know that we are hard at work on those issues, but I learned a long time ago, you don't argue with a man with a barrel full of ink. So whatever the paper prints is, the paper's prerogative. One item I'd personally like to address, and I get this a lot, is why bring religion in the public square? I want to make this clear: this resolution, 76% of the citizens of this county that voted in the election supported this resolution. Not only that, 61% of North Carolinians across the state supported this resolution. It is our responsibility to listen to our constituents. I can assure you, for every one person that tells me, "It's none of your business, stay out of it," that there's ten saying, "You guys should support the legislature and their right to appeal." So that is one of the reasons that I do support Commissioner Williams in bringing this forward. Lastly, I hear all the time that religion should not be in the public square. Well, everything's about religion. Liberalism is a religion. Conservatism is a religion. Secularism, relativism, moralism, these are all thoughts that are based off of precepts. Some of them include God, some of them don't. Communism, for example, starts with the fact that the state is God, where in our country, a democracy and things of that nature, we don't believe that. With that said, I can't separate my faith. I do not believe you can compartmentalize that, and I really wouldn't respect someone who did. Either you believe it or you don't. When I ran for public office, I stated, "This is who I am. This is what I do. If you support me, fine. If not, fine." So that is no secret. I will read this quote, and we'll move on. "America, America, it cannot be said too strongly or too often that this great nation was not founded by religionists, but by Christians. Not only religions, but on the gospel of Jesus Christ." Patrick Henry, the great orator, one of our founding fathers, said that. Our next item is an Alliance for Growth update. Mr. Carol D. Gray, Executive Director with the Greater Gaston Development Corporation, and Mr. Bob Clay, Chairman of the Greater Gaston Development Corporation. Mr. Gray and Mr. Clay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Commissioners, we're proud to be here tonight. This has been a fast and furious task that we've taken on. Back in early August, we made the decision for the business community made up of 41 investors, private investors, that Gaston County needed to be focused on two principles: one, jobs; two, tax base. With that in mind, we took on the responsibility of trying to create drivers of growth. One of the drivers of growth turned out to be Carol Gray. We're very lucky to have a gentleman with 22 years' experience as the CEO of the Charlotte Chamber of Commerce, who privately, in Mecklenburg, they do not have any public economic development. It's all private. So Carol has been at that helm, and I think you can look across the river and see the kind of things that happened in his 22 years while there. I'd also like to say that we intend for this to be completely inclusive, and by that I mean that the seven committees, these targets of growth that we put together, are made up of over 100 folks diverse across our county. I also want you to know that we met with a small group of commissioners very early on, back in August, to let them know what our plans were, along with the manager.
Hold on, Mr. Clay.
Certainly.
I know the reporters are reporting the news. I'm fine with that, but if you could, be respectful of the speaker. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Clay.
Thank you very much. I'd also very much like to recognize that the current President of the Gaston Regional Chamber, Rick Hauser, is here. Don Harrison, who is one of our committee chairs of Entrepreneurship, and also Robert Brown, one of our committee chairs, who is sites and building readiness. So we have a lot of support. We've had great momentum with this process. I will tell you that I hope that all of you will be available to come to our meeting on December the 15th, Monday night at 5:00 PM at the Conference Center. We intend to have reports with recommendations from all of our committee chairs. That's going to take about 50 minutes. We're going to roll out the program. We hope that over the next month and a half or so, through the holidays, that this will be widely publicized, widely discussed. We hope the Gazette will print what our mission is. We hope the media will be cognizant of it, but we also hope that basically everybody that comes to this meeting is going to be on the street talking about it. January, we intend to come up with some very direct initiatives. We intend to have successes immediately as a result of this, and we certainly are going to be looking for the county commissioners, all of our city governments in Gaston County to be supportive of our actions, and we hope to move forward successfully. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Carol Gray, and he'll present the program to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here tonight, and members of the commission, manager, and others, the general community. The Alliance for Growth is a planning initiative that is focused on doing two things: trying to bring business investment to this county, and as a result, create jobs. There are many other things that fall outside of this definition, which are very helpful, very valuable things to do, but we've chosen to limit our focus as much as we can in those two areas. I have been involved with the leadership of the Greater Gaston Development Corporation since early July, and it's been quite interesting to spend the time I have here every day talking to people in Gaston County. I'm very impressed by the many attributes and the fine leadership we have in this county, but in many respects, some of the leadership is on the sidelines. And we need to find a way to get these leaders back in the game, public and private, working together to clearly position Gaston County where it should be in the Charlotte region, and get additional investment here and additional jobs for our community. And I think if we do that, we're going to see a lot of issues, a lot of problems become less intense, because so many things are needful of additional investment and leadership. So we're very excited about it. What I'd like to do is to take a couple of minutes, if I've got it correct. Now, this is queued for me to go, and this is the right side? We all hope so? Okay. Let's see. Okay, so have all of you got a way to see what I'm presenting?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great.
Hit your spacebar, and that will do it.
Spacebar will do. Well, I think I can handle the spacebar. Anyway, the Alliance for Growth, let's see how we can make this work. Do I hit the spacebar?
Tap that one right. Well, you said that's what you do.
Well...
Spacebar's not working.
The spacebar ain't working right here.
There we go. Good. So what I do, just click on, click on the next screen. Well, that's good. Okay, Greater Gaston Development Corporation is a not-for-profit. Bob Clay mentioned that there are 41 investors, including the city of Gastonia, and a lot of in-kind support from the county. We think two graphics tell the story. The first graphic shows the population growth in Gaston County over the past three years is a combined 1.6%. Do the math, it's about half a percent a year. Our neighbors across the river are growing at about 2.5% a year. There's a question, if you grow that fast, you might outrun your infrastructure, you might outrun your schools. But surely, something between that number and half a percent a year is better for us. We think that should be done. Regrettably, here's another graphic that's important, and this shows that our property tax is one of the higher property taxes in the region. That's an issue that we didn't get into overnight, and we aren't likely to get out of it overnight. So we're going to have to solve it by rebuilding our business tax base in Gaston County. And that comes from helping businesses grow: small businesses, medium businesses, large businesses. But it also comes from attracting new business to Gaston County. So why a Greater Gaston Development Corporation? We have several chambers of commerce, we've got Gaston Together, we have other programs. Why another entity? The leadership felt that an unaffiliated group, starting out with a fresh slate, had the best chance of getting cooperation and unity behind a set of goals. So far, I will tell you, we've had incredible support. In your folder, which we passed out, there are leaders of all of our seven committees. Also in your folder is a roster of every committee, so you can see people you know are involved in all of these committees, and they've worked very hard. And I hope we will be able to give you something that will be very, very interesting on December Bob has figured it out. Thank you, sir. So the vision for the Alliance for Growth Planning Initiative is to become the preferred location in the Charlotte region for business. That's our vision. Are we there today? No. But we can be, if we work together. The mission of this Greater Gaston Development Corporation is to work through others or either directly ourselves in accomplishing some of these goals. It's not our intention to build an organization or staff beyond just the very basic one or two people that we have to keep things rolling. So we need a lot of cooperation, public and private, to make this work, and I'm encouraged that we are headed in that direction. But you know, this is not going to be an easy thing to do, because attracting growth has many facets. We have to have a good message about Gaston County. We are not sending any kind of message that we are involved in promoting our assets to the region, to the state, or anywhere. We are letting others define our message. We need to get positive about the many things that are going on and that are here that we know in Gaston County. So we need to promote our assets. We need to improve our competitiveness, which will attract capital investment and jobs. I mean, it's not, it's a simple process. It's hard to accomplish, but it's a simple process to talk about. For example, we have assets that few people across the river understand. We have the Stowe Botanical Gardens, which is literally a national asset. We have Belmont Abbey College, who wants to be this community's four-year college. Shield Museum, all of you go there on a frequent basis. Crowder's Mountain, the only mountain in the region. Belmont, Friday Night Live, many of you probably have been there for one or more. Quite an outpouring of local people. McAdenville at Christmas. I drove through McAdenville tonight. Very nice. The Whitewater Center. I'll come back to that in a minute. Incredible value in healthcare at Caramont. Stewart-Crema High School is as nice a high school as there is in the state. And our airport across the river. I'll go back to the Whitewater Center. That's across the river, too. We put some money in that to help it get started, but the airport is closer to Gaston County and Gastonia than it is to the majority of business leaders who live in Mecklenburg County. We can get there quicker than they can. And that's an asset that we have not taken full advantage of. If you look at a comparative airport, Dallas-Fort Worth, they're larger than we are, but not greatly so. The adjacent county to that airport is booming. It can happen here, and should. So what are we going to do? We're going to improve our competitiveness. We're going to work on, have been working, are getting close to the end of working on seven things we think drive growth. Each of these study committees, their recommendation will be consolidated into a report and presented to you and the community on December 15. The seven drivers, I had mentioned before, we have sites, buildings, and infrastructure. Robert Brown of Beam Construction. Robert, we appreciate your being here tonight. But his committee, you can tell yourself, is a very active, engaged, and committed group. Transportation and Access, Tim Efferd, Standard Distributors, Regina Moody of Holy Angels. That committee met last night, and at the end of the meeting, they were high-fiving each other. So that enthusiasm was really good to see. The growth regulatory process, this is really our customer service, in effect. This is how well we deal with incoming investors, local people who are trying to expand. These are people that are investing in our tax base, to help grow our tax base. It's really important that we understand that at the staff level and work very hard to make these applicants feel welcomed. Gerald Sosseby with Carolina Design Group, and Mike Stanford with Excel Environmental are co-chairing that committee. Workforce preparedness... Workforce preparedness, some would argue that workforce starts pre-K and goes as far forever, but we think we've narrowed that down a little bit. What can we do to help people who want a job today, high school students who will soon need a job, how can we help them become more employable? A good bit of that is academic learning, but another part of it are the social skills, learning how to get along with people, learning how to work in a group, learning how to think. All of this is important, and many of our students are coming out without some of that package, and we need to work on that, and we have some ideas that are coming out of this committee. Reeves McGowan, former superintendent of your schools, is chairing that committee. We have a committee called New and Expanded Recruiting. John Lirry of Wealth Plan Financial Partners is chairing that committee. This is how we are selling, the message we are sending, the breadth of our scope of recruiting business here. We're looking this over, this is involving our EDC, it's involving our tourism and transportation, I mean tourism and visitors. How well are we spreading our net? We have a very high-quality manufacturing and related recruiting program in our county, and we have two of the staff that's here tonight. We appreciate their coming, but I've had nothing but cooperation from the manager and from the EDC Director, Mr. Hicks. Entrepreneur and Small Business, Don Harrison of Alliance Bank and Trust, and Brad Rivers of Gaston College are co-chairing this committee. We appreciate Don being here tonight. This has been an interesting committee. We've benchmarked a lot of best practices, and there are a lot of ideas that have gone around about how to help small business. But Don and Brad and I feel like that we might be able to make a suggestion or two that has traction for Gaston County to help small business. And finally, image, marketing, and relationships. Andy Wallach of Parkdale Mills and Elaine Lirry of the Lirry Agency are co-chairing this committee. Andy has felt, over the years, that some of his relationships across the river are overlooking us and maybe even referring to us in some negative fashion. And I think he's tired of that. At least, I sense that to be the case. And our committee is wrapping up some work. We've done a survey that we'll, I think you'll find interesting, and we have surveyed Mecklenburg County, but we've also surveyed Gaston County. And some interesting insights coming out of that research that we'll look forward to sharing with you. So what we've done in the process, I have had over 85 personal meetings, not counting group meetings. The committee, all of our seven committees have had 33 meetings over the past two months. Involved, as Bob Clay mentioned, 105 volunteers. If you do the math in the committee meeting, about 6,900 hours by these volunteers, and we anticipate, excuse me, 20 or more recommendations that will be laid on the table on the 15th of December. So as I say in your packet, there is information, and my voice is about to leave me, but Bob and I will be glad to respond to any questions you might have.
I would also tell you, I think you can look by the quality of these committee chairs, the folks that, I had to call a lot of favors in, fellas. And it's, the exciting thing to me, although I've not been able to attend all the meetings, the exciting thing to me is seeing the participation, the amount of people coming back. You know, a lot of times, you start a committee meeting, you start out with 15 people, the next one you have seven, the last one, there's a couple of you sitting in the room hoping you can make a decision. That has not been the case in this. There has been absolute enthusiasm and just a lot of good ideas coming. I think that's fed off one another. So with that, we'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Carpenter.
Don't know that I have particular question. I find it exciting to have the group of businesspeople taking leadership. We've tried our best with the limited resources we have to help locate new industry here and create some jobs. We've done, I think, a pretty good job.
We agree.
With the limited resources we had, and we do have some major national corporations here, and we've worked with them. I've been involved in economic development, well, all my adult life. I came on the Economic Development Commission in mid-early 80s and was chairman for a few years before I was a county commissioner, and we had some business groups back then, but we didn't have the critical situation. The textile industries were thriving pretty good. But we did start out diversifying the industry back then. I think Hong Kong Light Chainsaw was one of the very first. But things have changed, and when we lost our textile industry, it created almost a crisis situation. We were losing so much of our tax base, manufacturing base, and we've still lost some of that. Thank God, we still have Parkdale Mill, American Efferd, and Four Yards, and a few others that have stuck with it and are doing quite well. I don't know that I can get a question to you out of that, except I want to work with you and the group in doing the things that we need to do to make our community very prosperous and successful, and the citizens of our county, where they will prosper very well. And I know the jobs you're trying to attract are the same type of jobs that we've been attracting in recent years, and they're good, quality-paying jobs. I know that you're probably focusing part of it on the development of good, educated, or qualified workers. And Gaston College is sitting right there and doing a tremendous job. That is so important. One thing that I see is a lot of the young folks do not see the future in some manufacturing. It's not like the old textile mills, it's all pretty much high-tech, robotic, computer-operated industry, and they need to get that education to get those jobs, because their job's available now with the right qualifications. So I just commend you for it, and I want to work with you in every way we can.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. We do appreciate that, and I will tell you that I've, in the 20 years or so that I've been, worked, done a lot of committee work in this group, and y'all have been in those meetings with me a lot of times, one thing that I think this, that the true difference of this group is going to be that they're good ideas, and we think that they're going to be implementable ideas. Oftentimes, committees meet, they all have good ideas, but they never figure out how to get it started. And I will tell you that it's our intent to come before this board and others with direct recommendations on how to do things a different way. Doesn't mean that what's been going on isn't right. I mean, the EDC has done a fabulous job in a very vertical market. We think there's a lot more vertical markets to go after, too, and ways to attack, and we're coming up with ideas on how to do that. So thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. I think the one thing that I'm excited most to hear about this is the group that you have assembled. In saying that, I think every committee meeting we've ever been to, we've had different pieces of the puzzle, but I'm excited to hear one part is going to start in with our negative background that comes from across the river. It is time for Gaston County to get off its laurels, get onto this podium and say, hey, you can come here and be a viable business. I think this committee needs to research, first of all, that needs to be first and foremost, and I'll be the first to tell you with this board, I'll be glad to help any way I can to push and promote what we can do with our viability here, because I've heard it for so long, and I've always talked about, it's always been my number-one thing, we've got to have an identity. And our identity is, come here and we'll show you what it's about, because we have a mountain, we have a Whitewater Center that we can go to across the river, we can get to those nice amenities that they have that they're paying tax dollars for. But I just want to thank you guys for putting that together. I think your group is outstanding, some of them not as good-looking as others, Robert, of course, but thank you so much for putting apart and taking time for our community, because it's time-staking for you guys, and I know you guys have worked hard, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make one more comment. I got my voice back now. If we consider Charlotte and the assets it brings to us, we've got those assets plus our assets, and Charlotte needs us, too, if you think about it. Charlotte's getting built out, there's not much available that's reasonably priced, and we need to fill that niche. We're on the main street of the southeast, I-85. Given all these assets and our proximity and things we know about ourselves, I think it's a matter of putting the game together.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gray, I'm glad you brought that up, because I know one of the first meetings I was in with you, you made a point about the airport, and you said, we need to stop referring to it as the airport or the Charlotte Airport, and we need to take possession of that and call it, this is our airport, we're 15 minutes away, and we've got an asset that we don't utilize like we should be. So I appreciate just your innovative thinking and your proactive approach on this. I know you guys have put a lot of work into it, this goes back a long time, and I appreciate it. You were right about some of the committee chairs, when you've got rock stars like Robert Brown and Don Harrison, I mean, you've really, you've really got some people to head this thing up. So I appreciate all your hard work on it, and if I leave you with one thing, I just want you to know, you've got the support of our board, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Price.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank both of you for doing what you do, and especially putting the time in it to make sure this project comes in with, I think Mr. Clay said, some implementable ideas, and the group that I'm most interested in would be the image, marketing, relationships. I think that, I will hope that group comes up with some ideas that we can put our hands around and get our image changed. So I look forward to seeing that.
Commissioner Price, I wish you could have been a fly on the wall to hear the conversations that have gone on in that committee. Obviously, we have, if not one of the strongest leaders in our community and most outspoken members of our community heading that chair, along with a very seasoned professional in public relations and marketing. So we're there.
I think that one, I think they're all important, but I think that one leads in or helps the others out.
Absolutely.
Tremendously if they come up with some doable things.
Wasn't by chance that he ended up there.
Commissioner Fraley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clay, Mr. Gray, appreciate you being here and what you guys are attempting to do, like all the other commissioners said, you know, you've got our support. Only thing I'd like to add is, don't forget to add Carolina Freight Truck Museum on interest in places to visit.
Absolutely.
Come and see. We've got a good attraction in Cherub, right, Robert?
Absolutely.
People have visited from all over the world. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make that change.
And we'll fix it. This is a dynamic process, and we are hoping to change, for sure.
I don't think Commissioner Fraley will support it without that change.
Thank you, gentlemen.
At this time, with any other matters from the board. With that said, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess. This meeting is adjourned. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Our invocation will be delivered by Commissioner Carpenter. Our pledge will be delivered by Commissioner Price. If you would, please stand.
Would you pray with me? Our Father God, we come to you and recognize that you are the Creator of all, and we thank you for this great creation, this world that we live in. Sometimes we abuse it. Forgive us, Lord, but we give you praise for all the beauty that is expressed through the many lives of our friends and neighbors, and we just ask you to keep us all mindful that love of you and our fellow man is above all. We ask the blessing upon us as we deal with the issues that face us and help us to be ever mindful that you are God and you will always be God, and there's no changing. Thank you for the many leaders that serve this nation and help us all here locally as we try to do the best we can to deal with the issues that face the citizens. Help us as we meet tonight and help us to do things in accordance with your will, for it is in your holy name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. The first item is public hearings. The county commission will take citizen comment on the following issues: a municipal appointment, town of Dallas, Dallas Planning Board of Adjustments ETJ, and a proposed FY16 Community Transportation Program application, and enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities program funds to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation no later than November the 21st, 2014. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the chair for a response, and the chair shall rule on all points of order. At this time, do I hear a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now in public hearing. The first item is an extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ appointment. The county commission will take citizen comment concerning applications submitted at or before the public hearing for one appointment to the Dallas Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, representing the extraterritorial jurisdiction. The town of Dallas Board of Aldermen has recommended Mr. Eric Klimmer. Are there additional applications to be received at this time? Hearing none. Are there any citizen comments? Are there any questions from the board? I'll make the motion and entertain a second to appoint Mr. Klimmer, appointed by Commissioner -- excuse me, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Our next item, the commission will accept comment on proposed FY16 Community Transportation Program application and enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities program funds to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation no later than November 21st, 2014. Ms. Cherie Wilson, Access Transportation Coordinator, will give a brief overview, and citizen comment will follow.
She did say asked her a lot of questions tonight. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Cherie Wilson here on behalf of the Department of Health and Human Services, Access Transportation, to present to you the FY16 Community Transportation Program grant, the Federal Section 5311, and the Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program grant, Federal Section 5310. The FY16 Community Transportation Program grant is afforded to the rural transportation services providers. It's afforded for the administrative salaries and costs. There is a local share that is $33,004. The total for the administrative grant is $220,018. There's a capital on this, the 5311 grant. The total for it is $83,164, a local match of just 10%, which is $8,317. That's for 28 mobile data devices to place on our vehicles, lettering and logos for six replacement vehicles. And again, this is to be submitted on or before November 21st, 2014. The Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program grant, while the majority of Gaston County's population is considered urban, it is part of an urbanized area that has less than 200,000 people, making it a small urban area. So with that being said, the state requested that replacement of our vehicles be under the small urbanized 5310 grant. So we're requesting that six vehicles that have met their life expectancy to be replaced. The total is $352,542, local share of only 10%, $35,255. I will say that when we dispose of our fleet, that money's come back into the program so that will help with the actual local match on the replacement vehicles.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there any citizen wishing to make comment? Hearing none. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve permission to apply for the North Carolina DOT TDD FY16 Community Transportation Program 5311 grant and Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program 5310 grant, and enter into an agreement with the North Carolina DOT and provide the necessary assurances. Commissioner Brown made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Is there any discussion? Correct. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
This concludes the public hearing for tonight. The board would like to thank each of you for your input. At this time, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Our next item is approval of the agenda, or excuse me, agenda revisions or approval. Are there any agenda -- revisions need to be made to the agenda? Commissioner Price?
Thank you. I will have a, I guess it's an attorney question on item B. When we surplus a vehicle and the vehicle is in use and there should be an incident, how much liability is the county under if are we still part of the system or are we out of it since we've sold the vehicle? If something were to happen with an aged vehicle that we've recognized as aged, are we still liable or are we out of liability?
We don't carry the motor vehicle liability for the rescue squads. We carry some comp coverage and that sort of thing, but if they can't service the vehicle sufficiently to keep it in service, they'd have to take it out. So I don't see that as a potential problem. We've got a lot of vehicles that are aged with a lot of miles on them. I think their theory is they'll use it lightly or as a backup, something of that nature.
Okay. I didn't know if it increased our liability because we knew it was old.
No, I think we would advise them to take it out of service, but it would be up to them to make care of the liability.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Are there any other questions or revisions? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to pull for discussion item N.
That would be at -- okay, are there any other items wishing, the commission wishing to pull or have questions about?
Does Mr. Williams realize Tennessee's on in a little bit?
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the revision of moving item N to items pulled from the consent agenda. That motion was made by Commissioner Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keiger. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Motion carries. Our next item is approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes of October the 28th, and there's actually three of these with, I think, three different statutes. North Carolina --
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? The minutes are approved. Thank you, Mr. Price. At this time, we have citizen recognition. We have just a couple folks signed up. If you would, if you'd all come to this side of the room when I call your name. Robert Kellogg, Scott Whitney, Sharon K. Wilson, Brenda White, and Jonesy Birchfield. Okay, Mr. Kellogg is not in attendance.
Not yet.
Mr. Kellogg? Mr. Scott Whitney?
I greet the distinguished Gaston County Board of Commissioners this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Scott Whitney. I reside at 504 Crescent Hill Road in Kings Mountain, North Carolina. I'm also the pastor of the East Gold Street Westland Church in Kings Mountain. You may be wondering why is a Cleveland County minister speaking at the Gaston County Board of Commissioners meeting? First and most important, Ms. Buff gave me permission. Second, I own a home in Gaston County, pay taxes here. I've lived much of my adult life here. I have lots of family here. I've pastored two different churches in Belmont and Dallas. I have vested interest in this county. I chose to drive over here this evening to go on record stating my support for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners who are brave enough, who are bold enough, to publicly stand in defense of God-defined one-man, one-woman marriage as the eternal word of God expresses it. In 2012, we've already mentioned, 61% of North Carolinians from all across our state voted to amend the state constitution to define marriage as between one man, one woman. 76% of those who chose to vote in Gaston County, 80% of those who chose to vote in Cleveland County, your sister county, your next-door neighbor, voted in favor of the marriage amendment. Now, two activist unelected federal judges strike down our state marriage amendment and ignore the majority will of our citizens. I for one say it is high time for citizens to speak loudly, to stand firm with politicians who stand for the sanctity of marriage, who stand for truth. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. At this time, Ms. Sharon K. Wilson.
Hi, my name is Sharon K. Wilson. My address is 3951 Puget Chapel Road, Dallas, North Carolina, and I am a minister. And first of all, I want to And first of all, I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak. And I also want to thank you and commend you for standing up and saying marriage is between a man and a woman. And thank you for giving me a voice because I was part of that seventy percent that voted in favor of marriage between a man and a woman. And I'm part of our, I belong to a prayer group, and part of what we do is we pray for our country. We pray for our families and our nations and our children at risk. And we were praying, asking God to send politicians that would stand for what marriage was created for between a man and a woman. And I thank the Commissioner Philbeck, who said that he has to go with whatever his instinct is concerning being a Christian. So I thank you for that. I have an agenda, but that's the main thing that I wanted to say. I thank God that I know it's separation of church and state, but we really, if we know the Bible, then we know that we really can't separate church and state because we know that most of the leaders that were in the Bible were, it was God's plan for them to take the ring and take care of the people who have a voice. If you're poor, you have a voice. If you have money, you have a little bit of a voice. But I, like the others, don't like the fact that someone else in another part of the country can say, you know, define what is a marriage between a man and a woman. I'm going to be brief. A lot of people don't know the impact that this type of lifestyle would have on young children. How is a parent going to explain that type of lifestyle, gay lifestyle? Why are two men holding hands? Why are they kissing? Also, you have a lot of people who have mental health issues or who've come from broken home life that may fall victim to this type of lifestyle. And I don't know if you know, if you're aware of it or not, but I know some friends who went to a gay club a couple of years ago, and there was kind of an argument that took place, and those, the girl and her boyfriend were almost gang raped. So this is the type thing that we have to take in consideration of. And the reason why this kind of thing can grow is if the politicians of the leaders don't stand up and say, but, you know, you can't do that here. So my question to you is this. If we decide what is marriage, then what's next? Is marriage soon eventually going to be okay for a man or a woman to marry a small child or for a man or a woman to marry an animal? That'd be next. That'd be the next agenda. So I thank you for standing up. I thank you for standing, I hope that this is just the beginning of politicians and leaders taking a look at this and saying that this is not what the people want in North Carolina. This is not what the people want here in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Brenda White.
Thank you very much. My name is Brenda White. I live on one-oh-five White Farm Road, Dallas, North Carolina. I want to thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I want to thank you, especially Commissioner Williams, for having the courage to do this. I want to apologize to each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. I have not prayed for you enough. Your job is tough, and I thank you for being willing to even run. I promise you that I will pray for you more. I stand before you as a citizen who believes wholeheartedly in a system that allows citizens to vote, and I take that very seriously. And when the marriage amendment was passed, there was, I'm sure, on both sides, people worked very hard to get out the vote. We worked extremely hard. I was very fortunate to be responsible, along with a group of people, to get workers for each precinct. And we were in support of the marriage amendment. The vote was cast resoundingly in Gaston County, and you've heard, you've heard the percentage, it was over seventy-six, it was seventy-six percent, the state over sixty percent. It was done legally. You gave the citizens the right to vote, and we voted not to ban homosexuality. It was to amend the state's constitution to define marriage as between one man and one woman. So you can imagine, when a judge legislated from the bench and took that right from us, we didn't like it. I don't look at you as what you're doing, except that you have had the courage to say the people have voted, and you're standing with that. And for me, somebody who believes in that voting, I thank you for standing with the citizens. And that doesn't mean that you're not standing for other citizens, but you are upholding the law that was passed. And so I applaud. I applaud. The other thing, and the last thing that I will say. I am a Christian. There is no way that I will ever, ever separate Jesus from anything I do, ever. And if you're a Christian, I believe you know that you are not too. I applaud you for praying. I want you to know that. One day, we all will stand before God, and every knee will bow, and every tongue will confess that Jesus Christ is Lord. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. White. Up next is Ms. Jonesy Birchfield. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
All right. I'm Jonesy Birchfield. I live at six-three-six Bridle Path Trail, Gastonia. I'd like to stand with you in your resolution. I'd like to stand with those who have spoken before me that I agree with what they have said. But a few other things that perhaps has not been said of tonight. Our constitution does not say anything that prohibits from our faith being practiced in all areas of our lives. So I feel that you have every right, as commissioners, to bring into this platform your faith. And we should not allow the voices to say separation of church and state. That is not in our constitution, and we need to stand for that. If we let those voices keep saying separation of church and state, it will silence the church, and we have every right to make our voice known. And to stand for the male and female, it's God's design. Without being vulgar, I would say, look at our anatomy. God has designed us to give us the anatomy that we might procreate. And in that procreating, we find love and emotion and a family-building life and a community life, not only here in Gastonia, but in our country. So I will stand with you, and I say thank you for your stand. Thank you for allowing me to express myself.
Thank you, Ms. Birchfield. Our next item is the consent agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. There are no items on non-consent. Our next item is items pulled from the consent agenda. Was item N. Commissioner Williams pulled that item. At this time, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll indulge me for just a minute. I did want to make a point, first of all, I know I helped author this particular resolution, but I want to make a point that every commissioner co-sponsored this, and I appreciate our board taking a stand and co-sponsoring this resolution. So it was unanimous among our board to sponsor this. So we all stand unified in taking this stand. One of the things I think's amazing is when I heard earlier how many people showed up to tell us how unimportant, irrelevant, and a waste of time this was. Apparently, it really wasn't unimportant, irrelevant, and a waste of time if they took time out of their busy schedule to come let us know how unimportant and irrelevant this I wanted to ask one thing real quick. One of the people said, leave your religion at home. And Commissioner Philbeck said earlier, we can't compartmentalize our faith. I don't check my religion at the door when I come in here. I was very clear when I was running for office, that's not who I am. My faith impacts what I do. And like Chairman Philbeck said, I really don't respect anybody that their faith doesn't impact what they do. With that said, this really isn't even about faith, to be honest with you. What this is, is us taking a stand when an activist judge overruled the will of the people here in Gaston County and in North Carolina. Over seventy-six percent of Gaston County voters who voted in that election cast their ballot to define marriage between a man and a woman. Over sixty percent of North Carolinians cast their ballot to define marriage between a man and a woman. These weren't fringe people. These weren't all conservative Republicans. Matter of fact, in Gaston County, forty-five out of forty-six precincts overwhelmingly supported this measure. I'm talking about precincts where the Republican candidate normally merits single-digit votes. These are overwhelmingly Democratic precincts, and they supported the marriage amendment. This was a bipartisan effort. It crossed racial boundaries. It crossed boundaries of faith. And we came together and said, we stand on the side of marriage between a man and a woman. And what happened was an activist judge stepped over the will of the people, and we're taking a stand against that judicial activism. I'll just say this in closing. Conservatives, people of faith, they're oftentimes, after a ruling comes down on gay marriage, abortion, prayer in school, the liberals often come and say, all right, this was the court ruling. You guys go sit in your corner and acquiesce to the new ruling. And unfortunately, for far too long, that's exactly what's happened. Conservatives and people of faith have done exactly that. Well, there comes a time when we say, we're not going to stand for that anymore. We're not going to let these people define who we are and trample the values that we hold here in Gaston County and North Carolina. The constitution protects the rights of the minority. But I want to be clear that it does not give the minority veto power over the will of the majority. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, I will entertain, excuse me, yeah, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve item N, BOC Resolution in opposition to the federal court ruling abolishing twenty-twelve marriage amendment to the North Carolina constitution. Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Keiger. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to commend our board for standing up for this. I for one am a center, and I am very reluctant to say that each one of us are. And we try to do our best every day to overcome our hardships that we face. But I think this is one to where I'm proud to be a part of it. And I want to say thank you to the board. But also, when this first came up and it was a limelight issue, not brought on by our board, but it was one that we stood up for and said it was going to be something we had recognized in Gaston County, we all ran on principle. People talk about how they're principles, but we also have to walk in the way that we want to be known. And if we walk in a godly way, we should be having some godly things. They've taken away, I think the young lady said it best, when, what's next? This is a stand, this cannot be taken lightly. And I hate to say it to where we're not going to be activists to try to do this, but I want to say we're taking a stand, and I'm really proud of this board for that because I think there is difference made in people. And I think it's the way you walk, the way you talk, the way you show yourselves. It doesn't have any fascism to say in, the derogatory comments that I received this week were far above anything that I've ever had to say about someone else, about me, just because of the way I want to vote, because of my preference. I don't influence any one of these six men to what they want to do. I influence myself by what I read and what I do. So I'm proud to take a stand, and I'll say I'll be voting for this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Carpenter.
I just want to say this resolution clearly expresses my belief in the due process of law and as expressed by Commissioner Williams. I too cannot separate my faith in Jesus Christ and the Holy Word of the Bible from my expressions as I come forward. So this clearly expresses my belief.
Any other comments on this issue? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is appointments. Commissioner Fraley.
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Tara Conrad.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two at this time. I'll make them both at the same. Animal Control Task Force, Mr. Chris Williams for reappointment, and also the Council on Aging, Ed Smith for reappointment.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Price.
No appointments.
Commissioner Williams.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Carpenter.
No appointments.
Okay, I have one appointment to the Animal Control Task Force Advisory Board, an application received from Mr. Reggie Horton. I'll make a motion. Second. Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We do have a full board vote.
Do them all at once.
We'll do them all at once. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve fourteen appointments as indicated on the attached list. And all can be made in one motion. I'll make that motion. It is seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? Excuse me. I'll let Commissioner Brown make that motion. I think he is on that. Commissioner Carpenter will second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any reports from commissioners? Commissioner Fraley.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you. I wanted to pass along to the board, I attended the Belmont Veterans Day Service in Belmont on Tuesday, and the speaker that day happened to be David Robinson, who is a lifelong Belmont native. But during his talk, part of his speech was about POWs, MIA's, and he wanted to tell what part the VFW, Veterans of the Former War, have in keeping the gun. the government on these issues. And, um, there was a MIA from Belmont, a Mr. Bunyan Price. No relation, but, uh, Mr. Price has been missing for forty-two years.
Wow.
And is coming home this week. That was, that was, uh, really very meaningful to those in the audience that knew him and he had a, uh, really, uh, heartwarming, touching to have something like that happen. And he reiterated the part that the VFW has in trying to keep the government active in, uh, locating these MIA's and POWs, but, um, forty-two years and he said at the end of the week, so tomorrow's the end of the week, so Mr. Bunyan Price will be, uh, buried in Greenwood Cemetery in Belmont once his remains are here. So just wanted to pass that along to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Uh, thank you for sharing that. Commissioner Williams?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Just, uh, I hope that some of you can register to go. I plan to go to the conference, uh, the Creative Solutions, uh, Central Island Council of Government. It's, uh, like our annual meeting. Uh, it's pretty much an all-day affair, but you probably could choose part of it if you could attend, because it's broken down to, uh, several sections. So, uh, uh, I, I think it's important, there's been a lot of work done, uh, networking with the, the cities and the counties in our region to address issues that are important to all of us, uh, issues that don't necessarily stop at the, at the county or city lines. So, uh, I hope that some of, I've got, uh, the information. If, uh, if anybody can go, I'd like to have somebody go with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. For sake of time, I have no committee reports. County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I will be attending the Creative Solutions Conference as well.
Thank you.
Uh, and incidentally, I spoke at the Mount Holly Rotary Club today. That was by, I think, my fourth rotary engagement in Gaston County. I, I believe I only have one more to go, Ms., Mr. Frayley, so I'll be up to Cherriville before long. Just a couple of real quick updates. You know, we, uh, have ordered an appraisal on the animal control property that we're seeking. We have been unable to come to terms on price with the, uh, with the owner, so we're taking it one step further and hopefully that will help us to, uh, define a price that is mutually acceptable. Phase one of the paperless solution is going to be implemented real soon. The iPads, uh, will be here and I think our folks will be scheduling a orientation session so that we can all become familiar with how to use that, that system.
Ladies.
And we've also been analyzing several of the other major platform solutions that'll form phase two of that, that process. Um, as you know, we've been, uh, spending a good deal of time doing some analysis of our situation with derelict properties and trying to devise solutions there, which we will be sharing with you as, as we, uh, arrive at some conclusions. But as you know, we currently have a complaint-driven process. It is a complicated set of, uh, circumstances that we're dealing with. We have a very large number of derelict properties and, and we want to approach this cautiously inasmuch as we have limited resources to, to deal with this. The wellness proposal, I think you have all, uh, expressed your support for and, and I really appreciate that. I think it'll be extremely valuable in terms of, uh, containing cost and also, uh, improving the health of our employees, which is, is very important. We should have a contract forthcoming on that in the very near future. And then finally, uh, we are, have also been given direction to move forward with the, uh, Gaston County Magazine and that's going to be a process that will take several months, but, uh, we're excited about it. And incidentally, uh, Mr. Dobbins has, has, uh, indicated that, uh, the CIO for the Department of Health and Human Services will be available to assist us in that process. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Earl. County attorneys report.
Got one quick, um, issue, Mr. Chairman. We have agreed to sell a parcel of, of land at the Summit Park and on Court Drive to Pearson Properties. As they have worked with their prospective tenants, uh, one of the tenants has asked if they could expand the, the survey out, in other words, acquire a bit more property. Uh, I haven't seen a site plan yet, but I think we're talking about half, half acre to quarter, three-quarter acre sized piece of property. So, uh, the question that, that I needed to get some guidance from the board about is whether, uh, you would like for us to bring back a public hearing on that issue or whether you would be content to, um, to sell some additional property to Pearson Properties at the price that, that we have currently contracted for. Uh, one of the, one of the first things we'll need to do is, I need to sit down with Mr. Hicks, look at the, at the site plan and survey and make sure that we're left with a suitable site, uh, next to that survey so that we, we don't get cut out of the site we can use in the future. But, um, the question is, are you, are you okay if we sell an additional piece of acreage under the current contract at the current price, uh, to Pearson's?
Thank you. Commissioner Price was first.
Well, I think you answered my question. I was concerned about taking additional property from another parcel. Would it make that parcel less attractive by doing so?
Right.
If it doesn't, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and I, I will sit down with Mr. Hicks next week and just, and take a look at that. We certainly don't want to leave a non-conforming parcel or a, I mean, non-buildable parcel there for us.
Commissioner Brown, the second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question, might have to rejog my cloud of memory. They had both parcels from the last one. I know there was some discrepancies on, they did, in the last agreement, they had both of those pieces that were involved in that, correct?
Yes.
So they were added in and then they want now, they want additional half acre.
Three-quarter.
Or a three-quarter.
Well, we, it's, it's undetermined yet exactly what they might need, but, but it looks like it may be up to three-quarters of an acre more for, for this tenant that they're working with.
I think if it were valuable to the board, I'd rather see a site plan and then have Mr. Hicks come in and at least get the board on what's happening there, seeing that with the purview of what they want because of all the other things they were asking for from before, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, I, I, if, if we get the same price and it's not going to affect the adjacent lots, I really don't have a problem with that rather than, but the, the only thing I would say, I don't want to see that valuable property set there any longer. If it's a spec, if they're speculating on building future, I don't want it to sit there. I'd like to see something built so that we can start getting revenue off of it.
Well, the, the request is in the context of, of an active tenant that's needing to expand some parking area.
Okay.
You know, I don't, don't have that locked down, but that's, that's what they've told me.
I really don't have any problem with it. I, I, sometimes government works real slow, but in this case, we've already had public hearings on that property.
Yes. Government always works real slow. But we, and what I was trying to avoid was the expense of another advertisement for a public hearing. Uh, but we could bring the site plan back to you on the ninth and, and for, for you to see what we're looking at and, and that, and then go forward if, if you're okay to just avoid another public hearing on that issue.
Commissioner Frayley.
I agree with Commissioner Carpenter. I think move ahead just so we make sure we're not messing up that other parcel, Commissioner Price. I'm good with that.
Anyone else wanting to make comment? The direction of the board is to proceed with bring, um, with the, to negotiate with the same contracted price that we already have.
Right.
And that you will bring us a plan back, I think, December tonight, uh, for us to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
You are welcome. This, well, but before I conclude, I first want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Uh, we will not meet again till December the ninth. Also, we have an induction ceremony at nine AM December the first here at the Harley B Gaston Forum. All elected officials, commissioners, school board, uh, folks and, and of that nature will be sworn in. Reverend Mark Harris will be here to give us, uh, the charge. So if you get an opportunity and, and you can be here, uh, December the first at the induction ceremony, you are welcome. It's open to the public. Want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This concludes our rescheduled meeting for tonight. Our next work session is December the ninth at 6:30 PM at the Harley B Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. Our December the 23rd BOC meeting has been canceled and rescheduled to immediately following the December ninth work session. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna S. Buff, at 704-866-3196 and share them. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.[1759.11][1759.11](music)[1760.11][1760.11]